On city council work session to order. And we've got a number of presentations this evening. Well, we have two presentations in executive session this evening. Our first presentation is going to be on the construction excise tax for affordable housing. And so I know Heather, you've got a number of guests with us tonight, but I'll introduce you and then you can introduce them and the topic. So Heather.
Great. So good evening, Mayor and councilors. We are bringing to you sort of a work session and presentation on a construction excise tax for affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Committee has been working on this evaluation and discussion for the last three years, and several of them are on this meeting. I can see them here. And then we have invited staff from the city of Bend, city of Tigard, and city of Newburgh, who have all adopted construction excise taxes, to come and share their experience with it with you so that you can learn how other cities are using it. What's going to happen is I'm going to start off and sort of introduce the topic, and then then we'll lead with the city of Bend, and then the city of Tigard, and then the city of Newburgh. And then we will close it with the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation to you as the McNimble City Council and open it up to discussion and questions. That works.
Sounds great, Heather.
Okay, I'm hoping you can see my screen.
It's there.
All right. So we're really here to learn about the construction excise tax for affordable housing that the committee's been working on, and then hear those presentations from the three other cities. I just talked to you about the introduction. We know you have a lot on your plate tonight, so we're trying to keep this to an hour, an hour and 15 minutes. But I wanted to, I'm showing this picture deliberately for affordable housing because we have, as a city, adopted the Great Neighborhood Principles. And one of our principles is that great neighborhoods have a diversity of housing for all income levels that is compatible with the neighborhood. So i.e., you don't drive into a neighborhood and identify which is the affordable housing project versus all the other housing projects in the neighborhood. And so looking at this photograph, these homes are all of similar types, and some could be affordable housing and some market RE housing. And that's the goal of what we're striving for here in McNimble. In terms of how this reaches, change your city council goals and strategic plan, it falls under the goal of housing opportunities, which is to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods. The strategic objective is to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing development opportunities. And this has a very specific item that it falls into, the priority action of inventory financial tools available to support housing development. Since McNimble, 37% of our future housing need will be to accommodate households that are 80% of median household income or less. So that's right here. This comes out of our housing needs analysis that we did in 2019. We haven't adopted it yet, but we know this is our future housing need. That equates to a little over 1,700 homes. Typically, when you're talking about households at 80% of median household income, you are looking at some sort of subsidized housing product for that. So a lot of our future housing need is affordable housing, and we're going to need to figure out how we're going to do that as the city. And just as a reminder, the city of McNimble has no dedicated revenue resource to assist in the development of affordable housing. So we are not large enough to be a community development block grant entitlement program. So we do not receive annual HUD funds for affordable housing, and we haven't set up any other dedicated resource. So we're working with very limited tools. The background on construction excise tax for affordable housing is that for a long time, it was not enabled through state law to be able to do so. But in 2016, the Oregon Legislative Session passed what's called Senate Bill 1533, and that enabled cities to collect construction excise tax for the specific use of affordable housing. Construction excise tax is a tax on building permits. So currently in McNimble, the McNimble School District collects a construction excise tax of 1% on building permits. We, the city, collects it for them and provides it to them. The Affordable Housing Committee has been evaluating this tool for affordable housing for the past three years. The Budget Committee recently recommended that the city evaluate a CET for affordable housing as a revenue resource to support affordable housing in McNimble. And then the city council just recently adopted Resolution 2021-55, which said, let's evaluate these revenue resources, including the CET for affordable housing. So the timing is right in terms of exploring this at this time. A little more detail on the Senate Bill of 1533. It allows for up to 1% construction excise tax on valuation of residential building permits. So 1% CET on residential building permits. And then there's no limit for the CET on commercial and industrial building permits. But we don't know of a city that's gone above 1.5% of a CET for commercial industrial building permits. And there are a variety of cities that have adopted CETS for affordable housing since the Senate Bill passed, and more are looking at it today based on some programs that are in front of us coming from the state. And I'll talk you through that a little bit. So the Senate Bill also says how the money can be distributed. So the money that we collect on residential CET would be distributed in the following manner. You can, as a city, remove 4% of the revenue off the top for administration of the program. And then 50% of the balance of the revenue needs to go into developers' incentives for affordable housing. So that would be things like buying down SDCs or buying land from developers for affordable housing or helping them develop affordable housing. 15% of the balance goes to the Oregon Housing and Community Services Program to be distributed for housing down payment assistance throughout the state. There is an effort at the state that the money that comes in from a local municipality through this program is distributed back into that local municipality, but we don't think that that's a policy driven practice. 35% of the balance then needs to go to local affordable housing programs. And then for the commercial CET funds, again, 4% of the revenue can be used for administration. And then 50% of the balance is to fund programs related to affordable housing. And then 50% of the balance is unrestricted by the bill. So the collection of the funds is used in different ways per the bill. There are exemptions that you cannot collect construction excise tax. And this is important because many times this comes up as a concern. So right from the get-go, we would not be collecting a construction excise tax on private school improvements, on public improvements, on residential housing that is guaranteed to be affordable to households that are below 80% average median income for at least six years. So that's your affordable housing projects. We're not going to collect a CET on them to pay for affordable housing. Public or private hospital improvements, improvements to religious facilities primarily used for worship or education associated with worship, agricultural buildings, and facilities that are operated by not-for-profit profit corporation and that are long-term care facilities, residential care facilities, or continuing care retirement communities. So all those types of facilities are here in McNimble and would be important for the discussion. The presentations that we have for you tonight are Bend, Tigard, and Newburgh. We chose them very specifically. Bend, as you will hear, has been, has had a CET for a long time. So they were able to put one together, I think almost 15 or 20 years ago. And then after they put one together, the state passed a law saying cities cannot do that anymore until just recently. But Bend was grandfathered in. So they've been operating their program and have been doing a really great job with it and leveraging it for affordable housing. Tigard is a community that's recently put it together, but it's generating a lot of revenue for them. So they'll be able to share that program. And then Newburgh just put theirs together, I believe, a year ago this time, more or less. And they'll be able to share what's happening with their program there. We asked them to come to you with what are their CET rates? What did they choose as a city? How much revenue is being generated? How much has been spent on affordable housing projects thus far? How are they using the CET funding? So how are they doing the distribution math? Funds, have they leveraged the CET funds for other funds? So for other types of grants? Have they been able, what have they actually been able to accomplish in terms of addressing their local affordable housing needs? And then how has this benefited the local construction sector and trades? And you often hear from the development community, this is a tax on us. We don't want to get a tax. But actually, there's been cities that have been able to leverage it in such a way that it goes back into the development community in a very positive manner. So with that, Mayor, I'm going to ask if we can have the city of Bend share their presentation. And this is Rachel Baker from the city of Bend.
Welcome, Rachel.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm gonna share my screen and start the slideshow. Did everyone see that well?
Yes.
Okay. So again, my name is Rachel Baker. I'm the Affordable Housing Manager for the city of Bend. And why the city of Bend needed an affordable housing fund traces back many years. As Heather said, we adopted the affordable housing fee in 2006, and it has just proven to be a very effective opportunity for our affordable housing program in Bend. It was adopted in 2006. It is collected on all residential building permits. It's a 1/3 of 1% fee collected based on the valuation of the building permit. And like, I think the numbers are up there for our 2021 to 2023 biennium. It averages about $1 million a year, collection-wise, and we put that back out into our affordable housing projects. And so far, over the years, it has supported the construction of over 100, over 1,000 units of affordable housing. This also has been renewed multiple times. It used to have a sunset clause. And in the last round of renewal, they removed the sunset clause because the community is so supportive of the affordable housing fund now. And I think going through the prior recession really proved its worth. The city of Bend, through its affordable housing fund, was the largest lender in the community for construction development. So once that occurred, then we had kind of buy-in from even, you know, every kind of construction developer. Because if anything, the recession has really demonstrated the underproduction of housing that occurred throughout the state. And the city of Bend, albeit small, was able to continue constructing housing during that time period for our affordable housing units. This is funding from 2020. As you may see, year to year, affordable housing funding can kind of change. Again, we average about $1 million a year, but 2021 was kind of a slow year for multiple reasons. COVID, everyone was super busy from the funding they got in 2020, and the supply chain just kind of left some uncertainty. So I wanted to show you our 2020 funding that has gone out. And all of these funded developments have been permitted, with the exception of Housing Works, which is our local housing authority. And they're kind of in the early phases of getting the other funding sources that they typically leverage. So Wish Camper Development is a national developer that also leveraged the $400,000 they received from the city of Bend to develop 240 rental apartment units. And as you can see by that total amount of leveraged funding down below, we put out about $1.7 million in 2020, and we leveraged $84 million from that in housing development. So Wish Camper is providing us with 240 units. They've already completed Phase 1 and are leasing units at this time, and they will continue their other two phases and getting more affordable housing units in the next year and a half. Pacific Crest Affordable Housing is a local housing developer. They also received $100,000 in affordable housing funding for 48 units, and they are already constructing those units. Core Community Land Trust is a homeownership type of program. They received $258,700 for their subdivision and infrastructure funding. They've already started utilizing those funds and are underway. And so hopefully, that will produce five homeownership opportunities. They just wrapped up their first project in, over the summer, and provided five homeownership opportunities in a community land trust from prior funding. This is a map of our production. So it demonstrates all of our CDBG and affordable housing fund investments throughout the city. So you can see that it is pretty spread out everywhere. And that is also, you know, a critical goal of making sure your community has housing choice in every neighborhood and that everyone benefits in every location for affordable housing development. And I believe we're going to have questions a bit later, but I just wanted to kind of wrap things up and allow the other presentations to occur. And then you can ask me specific questions regarding our program later.
Thank you, Rachel. Are we, are we going to go with Newburgh next, Heather?
I think so. I don't know if Skylar, Skylar Warren from the city of Tigard is on. Claudia and I were just conversing with each other to see if he was. You are Skylar, just open your video. So no, I don't see that. So Doug, if you're comfortable, we'd love to hear from you. Doug Rex from the city of Newburgh.
Go ahead, Doug. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since I've gotten to see you.
Absolutely.
So let's see here. Let's see if I can make technology work because sometimes it just doesn't work for me.
It's working.
All right. From the home office, so to speak. So as Heather indicated, we're kind of new on the block for creating a construction excise tax program. City Council adopted it in November of 2020. So we're just a year. So the ordinance went into effect in December 16th of 2020. They did do a delay on when we would start collecting the taxes for that. And so we started doing that on January 2nd of 2021. So our rate, we had a lot of discussions. So our Affordable Housing Commission spent a couple of years talking through the construction excise tax. And so we looked at the 0.33, we looked at 0.5, we looked at the 1%. In the end, we were looking at trends and what had been happening after the Great Recession, what kind of number of units we were getting. And the commission ended up putting forward a recommendation for a 1% on the residential side. We also had a lot of conversations on the commercial and the industrial side. And with that one, they ended up going with the 1% just to be consistent with what we were doing on the residential side. And so as Rachel indicated and Heather, you know, was based upon that permit value that is occurring. So being the new kids on the block, we have a much shorter time period than Bend. And in the first six months of 2020, 21, we collected $243,983. So far, the first four months of '21, '22, just a little over $180,000 in revenue has been generated. And all of ours has come from residential. We have had no commercial, new commercial or new industrial development or expansions onto a commercial or industrial complex at this point in time. We having some discussions with some different development entities on that opportunity. So again, it goes back, all of ours at this point has been residential, detached, single-family and apartment units that have come in. We have not expended any of the funds yet since we are new, just one year into the program. We took the 4% for admin, and we've actually hired a housing planner, and they started in September. And we use that 4% as part of the salary for that particular position, and the balance of it is funded through the general fund. So Heather went through these exemptions. There was a few additional that Newburgh looked at. And that would be agricultural buildings because we still do have ag occurring within our urban growth boundary. And we do have ongoing farming activities, and they do build buildings. And we heard from some of the community members that they wanted to make sure that those were exempt. The, any funds that our commission looked at and said, any funds that we would invest that are construction excise tax in any project, because that project would not have to pay a construction excise tax. We also went a little bit further in the non-living space in a residential property. And part of this came up, if somebody wanted to build a big, two or three-car detached garage. And our commission said, well, they shouldn't be paying the construction excise tax on that. And the city council agreed with that. We don't charge it on accessory dwelling units. So all the communities that are here tonight have had to address the ADU provisions. And then another one that they added is that if there is an improvement, and this was really related to single-family homes, and if that addition value was less than $100,000, not paying a construction excise tax. So there was a lot of discussion by the commission and the city council what those exemptions would be. The balance are those that are in state statute. We also added a partial exemption. And so as Heather indicated, you know, that 80% or less of median family income not having to pay the construction excise tax. My commission and council looked at it and said, if you were building that workforce housing between 80% and 120%, if you did the six-year provision to keep it affordable, is that you could get a 50% reduction on your construction excise tax payment. I think the thing I really wanted to share with you was what we had to go through for a couple of years. So when we started the program, we did a lot of outreach to our development community. And of course, they were not supportive of having a construction excise tax. Our school district does have one, and it's 1%. So through that, there was a lot of conversations about, well, everybody should pay for affordable housing, not just the new development pay for it. And so it was floated about doing a general obligation bond. And there was a lot of conversations about that because not everybody pays for a general obligation bond. Those tax-exempt properties, and with the university and the school district and other tax-exempt entities. It really did not get traction, but it is on our five-year-plus work program to look at the possibility of a geo-bond in the future. Through this process, we were asked, SDCs came into play. And of course, we know Newburgh and McNimble's SDCs are different because we always get compared. But it was brought forward about, well, if we're going to build a project, we want to vest the SDCs at the time we submit our land use applications. But there was no assurance or guarantee that they were going to build any affordable units. So that one really did not get traction. The Portland Area Home Builders Association was very active in our process. They were also active, as they articulated to me, with the city of Tigard. And so we had a lot of conversations with them. And so one of the things that came out of this as a concession to get the construction excise tax is we changed the timing of when you have to pay your system development charges. And so we backed that up from, at the time you are issued your building permit, we moved it back to the time that you schedule your insulation inspection. So that puts it about 60% of the way into the construction of a home or a unit. And in doing so, it reduced the developers' carrying cost. And so the Home Builders Association did talk with developers within Newburgh, and that was a concession that we were able to get passed and through our housing commission and get forward to the city council. We do have a sunset provision in our ordinance. And this was one that was brought up actually by HBA as well. Is, we have a provision that says six years. So in year or five, we have to evaluate the program to determine what its success has or has not been. And we have to give that report before that, end of that six-year period. And so the council will have to look at it to see if they continue the program forward or not. So we have not gotten to the tracking components of that yet, but we will. With our housing planner that we just hired, we're actually working through and developing the implementation program for all of this. And so Mary's been reaching out to the different jurisdictions who have the program so that we can get copies of their paperwork. And we'll be working through over the course of the next six months or so with our Affordable Housing Commission to develop that implementation program and then share that with the city council. Earlier, I mentioned that we use the admin fee pays for a portion of our, our housing plan position. For opportunities, because we're new, we haven't had a lot, but we are having conversations. So I have a handful of development entities I've been talking to about affordable housing. It has been ranging from, it could be duplex units up to multifamily units of five or more. We also have had some conversations with some entities who are looking to possible conversion and wanting to take a single-family home and turn it into a duplex. And they had some deficiencies in infrastructure. In this case, it was the wastewater system. So we're just, we're early into this process, but we're close by. We're only 14 miles away from you. So you can take what we're learning. And I've talked with Tom about how we put together our program and some of the issues that we've had to go through. And that's what I have for you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks so much, Doug.
You're welcome, Heather.
Mayor, I think Skylar Warren has joined us on the city of Tigard now.
Okay.
So I'd like to invite him to present if he's ready to use. So hi, Skylar. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Skylar Warren. I'm a planner with the city of Tigard. And I've been asked to speak with you this evening a little bit about our STC program. We do not use Zoom in our cities, so I apologize. I'm not very adept at using it. Let me know if you cannot see that.
Skylar, we can see your slide, so you're squared away.
Okay. So we enacted our construction excise tax in late 2019, October, actually of 2019. And it took effect on January 1st of 2020. That construction excise tax is 1% on all residential construction and then 1% on all commercial construction. So I'm sure that you all are familiar with the number of state-mandated exemptions to the construction excise tax. I'll just run through really quickly. We added some of our own that we thought were important, which included public school improvements, affordable housing that was for sale. I believe that affordable housing for rent is covered under the state exceptions. Accessory dwelling units. We did provide a sunset provision for the accessory dwelling unit exemption. Our missing middle housing, so that would be our cottage clusters and courtyard units and quads. We exempted those from 75% of the construction excise tax. In other words, they only pay 0.25%. Permits of value less than $50,000. And then replacement of residential structures where the original structure was destroyed by accident and where there's an addition of no more than 10% of living space. So why did we adopt this construction excise tax? Well, we had a number of goals, one of which was to backfill our system development charge funds because we already had an affordable housing STC exemption on the books. And, you know, that for one project alone could run to the order of about $2 million. So we were interested in backfilling that to make sure that our capital improvement projects were still able to move forward. We wanted to fund flexible affordable housing programs, support affordable homeownership through down payment assistance programs. And this is an important implementation step for our adopted affordable housing plan. So we did some calculations. So we did some calculations based on previous permit activity over the course of a number of calendar years. We did it on calendar years rather than our fiscal year. And looked at, you know, with that look back, what would we have been expected to generate in terms of CET? Now, these figures are a little bit high because we weren't able to do the type of analysis that would, you know, take out some of those exemptions, but we knew that this might be the upper limit on, on that CET generation. We looked particularly at the two most recent calendar years and what kind of CET we'd expect to generate on both the residential and commercial side. And that was important to kind of split that out because each of them are divvied out according to a different formula under the state statute. So essentially, we knew that we would expect for our flexible affordable housing programs about, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars per calendar year to go to the, anything that wasn't the SDC backfill or the OHCS affordable housing program. So what was the actual revenue outcome? We were COVID impacted unfortunately in years one and two, like I said, took effect January one of 2020. By March 12th of 2020, we were in shutdown and construction activity pretty much halted for about a three month period there and it was still slow thereafter. So ultimately, what we've got in our current fiscal year budget is about five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to go into that flexible affordable housing fund. So what have we done with that funding? Well, we focused it primarily right now on affordable homeownership. In fact, last night, our council just approved our contract with Proud Ground, which is our local community land trust for a first year budget of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars that will fund four to five homes through down payment assistance. And those homes are going to be permanently protected through the community land trust affordability program. I, I will mention just quickly, since Newburgh mentioned it, we did make a couple of concessions with the home builders association, one of which was that SDC deferral that was referenced. We did defer SDCs to the time of final inspection. And we're looking at vesting SDCs, although we have not quite gotten to the point where we're ready to roll that program out.
Thank you, Skylar. So I, I think where we're at Heather is, let's just open it up for council.
Well, Mayor, so now, now you actually need to hear the recommendation from the affordable housing committee. Your McMinnville affordable housing committee recommendation to you.
Thank you.
Heard about the other programs. We wanted to share what they were doing and now I want to share what the committee is recommending to you, especially council.
Great.
Okay, I'm assuming you can see my screen again.
Yes.
Okay. And Skylar, I've been doing Zoom for a year and a half and I still don't understand it very well, so. But so the committee is recommending that the city of McMinnville should adopt a CET for affordable housing. Why? Because there's need, approximately forty percent of our future housing needs in McMinnville will likely be subsidized housing. And then with House Bill 2003, which we've talked about a little bit, and McMinnville's an early adopter in this House bill, McMinnville will need to demonstrate how we are enacting programs to meet that need. We will have to adopt a housing production strategy by 2024 that says how we're meeting that need and the programs that we'll be putting together and how we're going to fund them. Again, McMinnville has no dedicated funds to support affordable housing at this time. With McMinnville's new annexation process, we're requesting affordable housing from future developers. So as the lands come in from the UGB, we will be working with them on annexation agreements and requiring affordable housing to be part of it. And we will need a program to help incentivize or offset those costs of affordable housing for those requests. And we've been talking about things like community land trust, which you've heard from two of the cities tonight. They're working on those with a couple of different nonprofits. For, we will need funding to help offset that. So the what, the rate that's being recommended is one percent for both residential and non-residential building permits. The use of the funds, the committee's recommending that we keep the ordinance broad and, and for ongoing flexibility to respond to needs. There's been a lot of dialogue over the last couple of years of what, what specific projects will you use it for? But what we've heard from other communities is keep that open because your, your needs are going to change over the years. And you want to be, you want to be able to respond to them. You're, you're dedicating it to affordable housing programs. There is a law that decides how that can be done. And so, you know, work within those parameters, but don't, don't narrow it too much. And focus on affordable housing. So the recommendation is to use the full CET at this point in time for affordable housing, including the fifty percent of the commercial CET that could be used for other needs as well. And then just like this, Newburgh, there is a recommendation from the committee to do a review and evaluation. So to have a five year review of the, of the program, see if it's working or not working, just like we did with our SDC exemption process for affordable housing. What does that mean in McMinnville? So we looked at our fiscal year for 2021 in terms of our different permit valuations. And just so you understand permit valuations, that we work, most cities work from a table of valuations for different types of projects that come in. And then we assign values based on that table. So this will look a little different than what you are seeing in the marketplace. Typically, land is taken out of this valuation because we're just putting valuation on the actual improvement being built. So last year, last fiscal year, we had about twenty-three million dollars of residential permits in terms of valuation. And then our non-residential permit valuation was about thirty-nine million dollars. So our total permit valuation was sixty-two seven. In terms of the residential permits, if we had had a one percent CET at the time, we would have generated two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We would have had nine thousand dollars for city administration. That would have left us with a balance of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Hundred and eleven thousand, that would go to developer incentives, thirty-three thousand to the state and seventy-eight thousand to affordable housing programs. That's the matrix that's in the bill. For the commercial side of it, we would have had three ninety-four, but for our total CET funds, fifteen thousand for a city administration, leaves a balance of thirty, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for developer incentives and this other of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So your total last year, if we had adopted this last year at the time that Newburgh went through the process, we would have had six hundred, or a little bit earlier than Newburgh, I guess, we would have had six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of CET funds, twenty-five thousand for city administration, which left a balance of six hundred and two thousand. Three hundred thousand would go to developer incentives, the local developer incentives to build affordable housing. And then two hundred and sixty-seven thousand would go to affordable housing programs in the community if we dedicated that other fifty percent of the commercial to affordable housing. And that means that CET would have been leveraged for affordable housing in our community. Five hundred and sixty-eight thousand would have been leveraged towards projects. So there's often discussion about what's the impact on housing itself. And as you know, as you've heard, there's an exemption in the bill already that housing serving eighty percent AMI or less that's locked down would be restrictions for sixty years is exempt. And some communities have, have put more exemptions in there. But an example is a two thousand square foot home, which would be evaluated in our table at a hundred and thirty dollars per square foot, plus a four hundred and forty square foot garage, which would then have this valuation of fifty-one dollars per square foot in our building permit tables. So that would have a building permit valuation of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The one percent CET would be twenty-eight hundred dollars. The market value of that house is different than the building permit valuation. So the market value of that house right now in McMinnville would have been four hundred and eighty thousand dollars at two hundred and forty dollars a square foot. The one percent CET in the end equals six tenths of one percent of the market value of the home to the consumer. So there's a lot of discussion about how these costs are being passed down to the consumer, but in our current market, that's, that's not the case. And then if you amortize that, that impact over the years of a mortgage, it's even less in terms of the annual cost. So over a thirty year mortgage would be a hundred dollars, we can calculate in interest. And over fifteen years, two hundred dollars a year. And then again, those homes that are serving households below eighty percent are exempt from it entirely. So the impact on housing need, which is really the story that we need to start talking about in McMinnville is how are we going to meet this future housing need? This one percent CET would put five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars annually and it would grow over time into our community to start helping serve this need, incentivize projects to serve our future housing need. So the next steps, if city council decides they want to move forward with, with this program, we would develop a brief sheet for developers, talk about what the proposal is and the timing for consideration and public hearing and get that out to developers. We would develop code provisions for you, city council, to consider and we're anticipating that would come in March. So we have time to talk to the development committee. And then if approved, we would recommend it takes effect in May one, twenty twenty-two and send out a mailing to developers letting them know the program and the effective date. So with that, I'm going to close and open it up to questions for all three cities or myself to talk about the McMinnville program.
Thank you, Heather. So councillors, questions for any of our guests or for Heather? Well, I can tell you, the presentations were very complete and, and gave us the historical perspective and the existing perspective and some of the future perspective. I think it helps us as a council really where some of the other cities. And then, and then Heather's ability to put that into a situation where what it looks like for us here in McMinnville. Sal, you've got your hand raised. Go ahead.
I did. I apologize for that shout. My dogs were just getting ready to start playing right on camera. Thank you for the presentations. I was very impressed with all three cities and I appreciate the, the thought that went into the programs. It seemed like the main differences between the programs involved the, both how the money was leveraged. It seemed like some cities were using a lot more of the funds towards, you know, without leveraging quite as much of the money. And then the second thing that I noticed were the types of exemptions that were given for different types of projects. And I found that personally, the ones that were articulated for Tigard were the ones that I thought were the, that kind of were most consistent with what I, I think my values are. Definitely supportive with the recommendations at one percent each. And I just note, Heather, I think you pointed out that something like forty or fifty percent of the units that we need to build in the community are below market and subsidized housing. We really don't have a plan for that right now. And if this can give us a path to accomplishing that, I think it's, it's really important. One of the key factors in bringing businesses into the community or growing businesses in the community is having a place where their workforce and people who earn a living and do most of the, the work in the community can live. And we just don't have that right now. So I really appreciate the work and I'm very supportive of the concept.
Thank you, Sal. Council president, Remy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody that presented. This was fantastic. I wasn't aware of the, having the, the, the fees due at, at the insulation inspection that Newburgh is, is carrying out. I wasn't aware of that aspect here. Program and I, I think that that's a fantastic addition in, in the idea that kind of listening to what all of these communities have gone through to develop and, and already work with, you know, the home builders association. And so that we can be aware as we move forward of trying to craft something that doesn't need to come back to council time and time again, that we can hopefully kind of hit it right out of the, the park. Of course, I'm very supportive of this. I, I also appreciate how much energy has been put into it over the last number of years by our planning department. And, you know, starting with developer meetings and trying to make sure that we had a broad array of voices in bringing this recommendation to council. So I don't, I guess I don't really have a question. I just wanted to make those comments and, and to really thank our visiting cities for, for coming today. And I love hearing the, the different things that you're doing or, or plan on doing with these funds as well. You know, it's, it has been hard having a zero dollar fund for the work that the McMinnville Affordable Housing Committee has been taking on for the last number of years. So we really appreciate everybody coming today and, and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Kelly, or excuse me, Zach, you're up.
Thank you. Thanks to everybody who presented tonight. Super fascinating, super cool information. Couple of questions. Just I guess confirmation, Heather, I'm, I'm gathering that and maybe more definition or refinement would come. But you aren't, McMinnville Affordable Housing isn't proposing any additional exemptions to the program. It would just be the state ones and none others. I saw some highlights from the other groups we heard here tonight that they had additional exemptions. Has that not been discussed yet at our level or that, has that been discussed or we're just going to stick with the state?
The only place it's been discussed is for the workforce housing perspective. And we were looking at a sliding scale for that, similar to I think what Newburgh has done. But if that's something that the city council wants to do, wants the affordable house. So what we wanted to do is bring this to you and really get your feedback on it. And if it's something you want to move forward with and if there's more work you'd like us to do. So if one of the things is to explore additional local exemptions based on local values, the committee could certainly have those discussions.
Okay. I, I don't know if I'm prepared to have that discussion, but I think it, I think it would be interesting and worthy of, of a discussion to figure out what those are. I know, you know, we've talked about how do we get more daycare facilities and things like that, right? Just making sure that, that this isn't, this isn't doing one good and blocking another. And I know there's good people, smarter people doing lots of more research into that than me. But I just, I think, not to make a giant list of more complex and nuanced exemptions, but I think there are some areas that, that'd be interesting to explore to ensure that we're, we're still able to let other projects come through while we try and build this fund up. Continuing the theme of our own local level one, has the HBA been a part of our discussions?
No, they haven't. But I think it's because we, we were having our dialogue during the sweet spot when their governor Ferris position was in transition. So I'm sure after tonight, they will be.
Okay. Excellent. Good. What, maybe to the other communities that presented tonight, what, what if any challenges have been met by the development community, not necessarily in pushback, but just sort of in process implementation? I think even as council president pointed out, the, the ways in which you sort of more creatively offset some burdens by pushing the time in which you need to pay SDCs, which I think is, is great and makes sense that, you know. But have there been any process implementation challenges, right? Every, every stick, every nail that goes up is, is one thing that can't come down. And so the further things go, it's, it's sort of becomes, your, your stick becomes a little bit shorter. So have, have there been any difficulties or pushbacks or foibles in, in some of those concessions or process, process things? Specifically the change in when you collect your SDCs, but just sort of any other unintended things that have come up? And that's sort of to the panel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually curious to hear from Newburgh about that as well, because I think in Tigard, you know, we're a larger community. Relatively speaking, we're small in Portland MSA terms. But for us, that has been a little bit of an administrative challenge, quite honestly. I mean, logistically, there's just a lot involved in taking in system development charges at that final inspection stage. It requires a lot of coordination with building permit staff and inspectors and that kind of thing. And I think our concern going into it was that it would create a situation where, you know, many homes that have been built are already purchased, and someone's waiting to move into it. And it would potentially create a little bit of a bottleneck where collection of that SDC is on the developer, but the city is the one seen as kind of holding up the final inspection. So it's a bit of an optics problem as well. So it's been challenging for us. I wouldn't say that, I would necessarily recommend it one way or the other. But, you know, I'm definitely curious to hear from Newburgh as well, what their experience has been with it.
Doug?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Skylar, yeah, we had a lot of conversations about that because we were originally asked to delay collection of SDCs until a point in time of final inspection. But we had similar concerns is your home's ready to be finished. You have a buyer. Funds are sitting in escrow. Developer needs to pay the SDCs. Developer needs to go back to their financer to get those additional funds. Meantime, new owner is sitting there, and they're moving out of their other home or moving out of an apartment, wherever it may be, and now they're stuck. So that's why we backed up to the insulation inspection stage. Because that's still, like I said, you know, it's about sixty percent or so into the construction of that particular unit. But it does put some onus now back on the developer because they've got to go back to their financing. We still have situations where developers come in and say, no, I'm gonna pay my SDCs right upfront when we pull our building permit. And that's their own business model, how they might want to do it. It does get to be, or can be, a bit of a challenge if a unit gets to the point of that insulation inspection and they schedule it, and they think inspectors are gonna be out the next day to do that inspection. But we then have to internally look, oh, you know, have they paid their SDCs yet? No, they haven't. And then you have to get a hold of the developers and say, no, you gotta pay your SDCs before we're gonna come out and do that inspection. And it may take them several days to get the funds lined and come in and pay, or pay over the phone, to be able to do that. So there's that little bit of tension that does exist. I don't think there's a perfect system. It's trying to find the system that will work and then fine tune it, you know, on an annual basis to make it more efficient.
And I'll ask Rachel, from your perspective in Bend, if you'd like to weigh in.
Well, I'm happy to weigh in. Bend doesn't have any exceptions. We don't even have the state exceptions because ours was grandfathered in. And so we don't give anything to the state or have any of those complexities, which is why ours is probably, it was implemented simply, and it has been continued simply. We did implement, which I didn't discuss, a construction excise tax on commercial and industrial at the end of twenty twenty. And so that is just like barely collecting anything over the last year. I was pleased to hear that we aren't the only ones that didn't really generate any revenue from that. I think COVID and implementation of software really slowed us down on that. So I think we have maybe thirteen thousand generated from that fund. But the city did designate that specifically for thirty percent AMI and below. So that is like kind of our one exception, I would say. And with regards to implementing any kind of SDC payment change, I don't think the city of Bend has the capacity to do that. We are just way too busy, if that makes any sense. So I would definitely make sure that your community has the capacity to do that kind of implementation.
Thank you, Rachel. Let's go back to Zach. Your questions answered, Zach?
Oh, swimmingly. Thank you all. That was, yeah, enlightening. And as I suspected, it's sort of a change in the process. And us builders are, we're good at building houses, maybe not good at processes. But, so that makes sense. And maybe it wouldn't come down the pipe until a few years when there's money in that. But do you, Heather, organizationally, what changes do you think we need to, what changes do you foresee us needing to make to properly administer and manage the, this program? And the money is collected, and then the money is out. Is it additional staff? I see, maybe because Bend has been around so long, they have, I mean, our representative from Bend here today is entirely staffed around affordable housing. Is that something you see us headed towards or to be figured out? Or how do you see staff for this?
Oh, I do think the most effective way of leveraging the funds and achieving the goals of, oh, affordable housing needs to have dedicated staff. But Newburgh is moving in that direction. Bend has a division of staff working on affordable housing. And I imagine Tigerd does as well. I'm not sure. But eventually, I would see us going in that direction. Would we go in that direction initially? Probably not, because the four percent's not going to fund that. I think in Newburgh, the general fund is participating in the financing for the housing plan there. So that would be a discussion we would have to have locally. But it is a complex program to administer, to really be effective and to generate the units that you need in your community, much like Bend has been able to do over the years because they've dedicated the resources to it.
Thank you. That makes sense. All, one final question, and then a comment, and then I'll move on. As I've, you know, as I learn more about the topic, I really do think that, you know, the fifty percent developer granting or whatever, basically the ability to just help pay to create these units is probably the most effective tool into getting them done. How effective are we getting, or are jurisdictions getting? And maybe Bend, they have the longest sample size, can have one of the better answers, but maybe all your guys' expertise in sort of swimming upstream as far as possible in the processes to most greatly affect development as they get thought of and drafted up and designed to just sort of change that mentality and bring developers to the table. I mean, by the time you go to a pre-app, right, you already figured out what you do, and somebody has owned the property for five, ten years or something like that. But, and it's too late by the time they find out, oh, you know, there's three hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand available or things like that. Are there effective strategies? If there are, what are they? Or how are we getting better at swimming upstream in that development process? And if there is no answer, that is fine, too.
You know, councillor, from Newburgh's perspective is that when we're having our pre-app meetings, and if we're talking about housing, we're bringing to the table at that point in time is we do have a construction excise tax. You know, are you building market rate product? Or are you, or would you consider affordable? And many times, it's like, well, they think, oh, we're just doing market rate. It's like, well, we have a construction excise tax. We may be able to help partner with you in order to address some SDC issues or some infrastructure issues. And then it's a process of negotiation about, well, how many units? And so that's kind of the stage we're at because we're early into implementing this particular program. But it's getting developers to understand is like, the city is here, and we are looking to partner with you to get these affordable units. What would it take? And sometimes that requires the developer to step back and say, well, I haven't thought about that. Other conversations is, they have thought about it. And they come into the meeting and say, what kind of packages do you have to assist us in trying to provide affordable units? And for Newburgh, we have a trust fund. It doesn't, Affordable Housing Trust Fund doesn't have a lot of money in it. But now we've got this construction excise tax where we are starting to generate that revenue.
And the city of Bend is getting lots of people interested in developing affordable housing here. And so frequently, it is calls to our, although we have a division, it is a very small division. Until recently, it was just two of us. So, and we do get CDBG funding as well. And so that's about five hundred thousand dollars a year. So it's a combination of those two funds. Our SDC exemptions, we exempt all SDCs for affordable housing development. We have also tax exemptions, property tax exemptions for twenty-year periods for affordable housing. So we have lots of other affordable housing development incentives that really, I think, pique the curiosity of affordable housing developers so that they call us and they're like, how do I get land? Well, how you get land is you apply for this Affordable Housing Fund that our committee determines whether or not your project. And the more your project is shovel-ready, the higher prioritized our Affordable Housing Committee will fund your project. So it's all about kind of how glittery can you make your project, essentially? Present it to our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. They make the recommendations to council, and then things kind of get rolling from there.
Rachel, don't you receive more project requests than you have funds year over year? I mean, it's a very popular program in Bend.
Yes. I mean, typically, we're looking at requests of funds of three to four million dollars, and we only have typically a million dollars a year. That ebbs and flows, that million dollars. Sometimes it's a little bit more, sometimes it's a little bit less. We're looking at another strong year ahead of us with regards to funding, and we have six proposals for affordable housing developments in this next funding round.
Oh, that's fantastic. That's beautiful.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, that answers my questions. Thank you. Super helpful. I think it's just how good and robust and educational, but also in a really sweet and digestible pill, can you make that marketing package? So excellent. Thank you very much. I'll just kind of voice my support for this program as presented. Looking forward to working on it as we go forward and seeing what the Affordable Housing Commission comes up with. I think it's, it makes totally sense, and I'm glad and appreciative it's being brought forward, as well as we are, I'm glad that we're including the non-residential at one percent as well, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go over to Kelly.
Thank you. Number one, I do want to thank everyone who participated tonight. It's just wonderful to see all the city representation. I think you've kind of made our case for us, and we really appreciate it. I just want you to know that I strongly support this and as presented. I must admit that some of the suggestions of Tigerd are well worth looking at. But for the most part, I think what Heather has presented to us tonight is good. And I think we should do it.
Thank you, Kelly. We're a little past the hour. Any other questions or discussion? Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to, really, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. It was informative, and I was grateful to hear the different approaches by different cities. I noticed in two of them, they sat down with the Portland Home Builders Association. And I just, in looking through the process that we have going forward, I noticed that there is, one of the next steps is to try to bring some of the developers to the table. And I just want to make sure that that is, I saw that correctly, that that is on the table, that is gonna happen. And I would hope, hoping that the Portland Home Builders will be part of that discussion process. I think it's gonna be a lot easier to get a project like this through if we include the stakeholders and if we try to do it without them. So there's kind of a question buried in there, Heather, and I'll let you respond to that. Thank you for all that you all are doing.
Yeah, so we definitely intend to reach out to the development community to, we already had a couple of forums with the development community over the last three years in this discussion. But we definitely intend, if we get direction to move forward tonight, to reach out to them and let them know that we're moving forward with a proposal to city council. What does it look like? What are their concerns? Also want to let them know about when you're considering it and hosting a public hearing so that they can express themselves. The HBA, it's interesting because our local home builders aren't really, we don't have, they're not members of the HBA, but the HBA has participated in our UGB discussion over the last year, and they've been watching McMinnville, just like they, I think they're watching the Valley at this point in time. And so I'm sure that they'll be reaching out to us. Their new government affairs staff person has reached out to me a couple of times in the last couple of weeks and just hosted an event in Newburgh, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, so.
Well, just to follow up on that, I don't want it just to be they're reaching out to us. I want to make sure that we are making an effort to bring them to the table.
Yeah.
Because some of the last, some of the last major projects that have happened have been with those that are connected to Portland Home Builders Association. And so I don't want to end up in a situation where we go to a vote and they're coming in saying they haven't heard, they weren't even aware. So that's all I'm trying to make sure of.
We will reach out to them. I'm gonna make a concerted effort to make sure we're reaching out to all the home builders in McMinnville. But we'll reach out to them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Chris and Heather. Zach?
Yeah, thanks. Real quick, and maybe more for Remy, Council President Drapkin. But I remember maybe four, five years ago, attending an informational construction excise tax meeting, and around the table was Rudin, Carlisle, you know, Colback of RB, a handful of the other guys, fellow builders in the area. And, you know, there was, it was a really informative presentation, a concept. Here's what it is. We're thinking about it. And just sort of nods or grumpy mumbles or whatever. But I remember being around that table many years ago. And so we've laid groundwork and we've had good conversations. You know, it always changes when it actually is something to be voted on at this stage. But maybe, Remy, you could talk a little bit about that, but I remember that going back many years.
Remy? You're muted.
Is that me, Mr. Mayor?
That's, you're fine now.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I wanted to just follow up on what councillor Gary said because that was important to us from really the moment that we started this conversation and we knew it was going to be work that the Affordable Housing Commission was looking at was to engage the developer committees, community. So to both councillor Gary and councillor Chenoweth, Zach, you remember correctly, we rented or used, we didn't rent, we used a room at the community center upstairs. We shared all the information we currently had, and we did our best to get that invitation out to every developer that we knew that was working in McMinnville. And I thought the attendance was pretty robust. So just to maybe assuage some concern that there's not intent to engage the development community, truly, the opposite couldn't be more true. It's been very intentional the entire time. And I know that, we all know that that is a very important aspect to bring a policy forward that will be palatable and has the potential of being approved and moving forward and giving us this tool that we have long sought and desired to have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that response, Remy. Also, just to remind people that over the years on the Affordable Housing Committee, we've had local builder representation there. Howard Astor, Alan Rudin, and these are some of the leaders in the local group that have been around the table on that discussion.
And they have had input and have gone back and liaised on back and forth the entire time. So they're well aware.
Yeah. Let's go over to Adam and then Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to jump on here and thank Heather for putting together the presentation and the team she assembled from the other cities that took time out of their night to come present. I really appreciated the diverse look at how you guys are doing it and gives us some framework to not reinvent the wheel, but be able to right-size it for McMinnville. And, yeah, I do recall those builders being around with construction excise tax years ago. I think it was even before I was on council initially. So, you know, just making sure we're having that continued dialogue with them and that everybody, whether they're, you know, reaching out from the Home Builders Association or they're more localized builders, definitely they having a strong dialogue moving forward. But I'm game for moving forward with the discussion, and I'm definitely in favor of a just kind of flat rate across the board like Newburgh did than having a construction, or a commercial one and a residential one. I just think making it simple and easy for people to figure out their fees. I just think making it simple and easy for people to figure out their fees on their projects, the best route to go, but we can have that discussion later. Thank you, everybody, for presentation tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go back up to Chris.
Yeah, I just want to make a point of clarification. I wasn't trying to assert that there hasn't been dialogue before. I just, in listening to what the City of Newburgh did and the City of Tiger did, you know, it, it, I just want to make sure, as Adam said, we have continued conversations going forward. They brought those stakeholders to the table, they played a role in forming this and framing this, and, and when you do that, that collaboration helps to get the buy-in and, and create less pushback and less blowback. And so, you know, my intent wasn't to say this hasn't happened before, but Portland Home Builders are really relatively new, I think, in this area, as I understand it, and they are doing a lot of the large development, so we want to make sure they're one of the big players. We need to make sure we have them at the table, and so we have their buy-in. And that's all I was trying to convey. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, I don't see any further hands raised. Heather, you've got some direction from council tonight as we move and take this back to the Affordable Housing Committee, and Remy, you're on the line, but I think we've got some direction, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you Doug, Skylar, and Rachel for your participation this evening. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. We will now move on to our, our second discussion this evening, and we will be talking about the consolidation study on the fire districting, and so we will call on our fire chief, Rich, to address us, and we'll introduce the topic. Rich?
Hold on. Excuse me? Give me one. You can tell me that I'm happy.
I see, I see a head at the civic center.
Mr. Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
We can hear you, we just see.
We're working on the video component. I'm camera shy, so we're working on that. As we, as we work on the camera angle, I just wanted to, I'll just start off by introducing Sheldon Gilbert. He's our ESCI consultant for our project, and he's taking the lead on this and, and bringing this out the back end, and he's got a report for us, for council for this evening, and a lot of good information to prepare for tomorrow evening's meeting. So I'll turn it over to Gilbert, Sheldon Gilbert.
Thanks, Dave.
Sheldon, welcome. It's good to, well, now we may be able to see you, but it's good to have you back into town, and, and we're looking forward to our discussion tonight.
Great. Well, it's an honor to be here, Honorable Mayor and Council, and that video's making me dizzy, but, so I won't just look up. But, so I'm like a bad penny, I'm back, but I think the good news is we truly are converging to a resolution, and I think a solid direction for you and the other participants in this study to, to consider. As you recall, I was here not too long ago, there we go, a few months ago, and we had done some modeling and some, some financial and operational modeling for the eight jurisdictions that were, that were left in the, in the process, and asked them to let us know if they wished to move forward and that we would want to do one more final modeling for those agencies that truly were interested in moving forward. And to that end, seven of them did in fact stay the course. I'm not sure what's showing up as far as the presentation. Oh, there we go. There we go.
Yeah, it's coming up right now.
Okay, excellent. Let me see if I can make it go here. I'm trying to turn the slides here, stand by.
You can just tell me next slide.
Next slide.
The old remote.
There we go. And so as it stands now, then there were seven. So, so we currently modeled, and I have been presenting to all these jurisdictions this week, you are the last presentation before our meeting on Thursday, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, but we've, we've talked with Dundee and Dundee Rural, McMinnville Rural just before your meeting, Lafayette, Carlton, and the Amity Fire Districts, and had some good conversations and ran them through this updated modeling criteria and information, and I think we have a good idea as to who's interested in coming Thursday night and moving this forward. Next slide, please. As you recall, the, the things that we have conducted over the past few years, two and a half years, has been the initial cooperative service study, which included all of the northern departments as well as some of the mid-county Willamette Valley departments, and then subsequently we, we pulled back to just the eight northern departments, and now we're down to seven, and we conducted modeling and a standards and cover study, and then also did some strategic planning with the, the leadership and, and provided and completed an implementation plan, which we will talk about in a few minutes also. Next slide, please. The study purpose was to really take a look at the current fiscal structure and infrastructure within each of the jurisdictions and evaluate those as it relates to the model that we are now on, which we're calling Scenario Three, and analyze these options and alternatives to see which ones have the greatest opportunity for success and sustainability and benefit to the community moving forward. Next slide, please. Just to take you back and do a quick review, these are the two models that we did the last time I was here in front of you, and it included Dayton. Dayton was the department that pulled back, that got us down to the departments I just mentioned, but we did a 1.5 mil rate, which was kind of considered to be the floor, and a 2.0 mil rate, which was kind of considered to be the optimum, and that is, continues to be the case with the new modeling, but you can recall that with all those departments at the 1.5, although there was adequate reserve and fund balance, the expenditures exceeded the revenue in year three, four, and five. At the 2.0 mil rate, you can see that the reserve or available fund balance built significantly, which allowed for investment in personnel and/or capital to better serve the districts, or to better serve this new district that was being hypothesized. So then we'll fast forward to what we've done now. We've ran the models for the, the Scenario Three, which is everybody excluding Dayton. So next slide, please. And the first thing I want to show you is just to give you a perspective on the top-line revenue. What traditionally has happened when we model these and what has been the case in most of the budgets of the districts, they estimate about a 2% increase annually in assessed value, and that is the line on the bottom that you see that shows kind of what you would expect for revenue growth. We overlaid that with the actual performance of the seven jurisdictions in this model, and you will see that you exceeded or outperformed that 2% assumption very significantly in 2010 through 2013, 2014 and 15, it dipped, and then of course now we're going into almost uncharted territory as it relates to the assessed value and the availability of inventory and, and costs. So the revenue is going to exceed the, the model, which we did very conservatively at 2%. I will also tell you on the expenditure side, and we get to that in just a minute, we made some general assumptions that cost of living increases for salaries at 3%, benefits is an additional 3%, and supplies and services is an additional 3%, so compounding 9% increase each year to the 2% increase on revenue each year. So we feel it's a conservative model, and it'll probably be outperformed by reality, at least as it exists now, but it'd also will give you a good idea of what you have to work with moving forward. Next slide, please. So this is the 1.5 or the floor model, if you will, for these seven jurisdictions, McMinnville, McMinnville Rural, Dundee, Dundee Rural, Amity, Lafayette, and New Carlton. It is very similar to what we had with Dayton with some minor differences, but generally you can see that the available fund balance in 2021 began at $7 million, dropped to a little under $4 million, mainly because of the Lafayette Station being built and paid for, and then you see it kind of stabilize and maintain about a four to $4.4 million available fund balance or reserve. That is well within the 20% target that GASB recommends for fire districts, but you do see that your year-to-year expenditures exceed your revenue starting in 2024 and escalating in 2025 and 2026. So here's what it tells you. You generally have a good reserve balance, but this is probably not a sustainable mil rate long-term as you will continue to go into the red. So then we went ahead and modeled it at two mils, and we'll go to the next slide for this, please. And you'll see that the one on the left is the 1.5, exactly what I just showed you, but the one on the right is the new model at two, two mils. And what you will see there is that your expenditures do not exceed your top-line revenue at this rate, and you in fact begin to see a healthy buildup of your reserves and available fund balance that goes from a low of 3.5 approximately all the way up to almost $8 million in 2026, with just a slight over expenditure over revenue in 2026. Once again, the assumption is that the cost will probably not increase at the compounding 9%, and the revenue will probably increase at greater than the compounding 2%, so I suspect you will stay, you will not be in the red even in 2026 based on actual performance and what we're seeing. So let's take a look now at what that looks like for your actual reserve or available fund balance, so we'll go to the next slide, please. And you'll see at the 1.5 versus the two mils, that fund balance, just with a, with a more clear view, that you stay about $4 million on the 1.5 mil and you climb up to about $8 million on the 2.0 mil. Now, the reason that that's important is because there's really not a lot of money available for capital or increase in enhanced service levels on the 1.5, but you can see where that, that available funding is, is in place at the 2.0 so that you can in fact add personnel, add volunteer creative programs, or add for capital if needed. I would also just specify that there is existing capital costs in, below the blue line. So the, the, the normal projections take into account all of the current bond measures and all of the current capital initiatives. So those are all included under the blue line as part of your, your baseline budget, or your baseline expenditures, rather. And I would say this, that as those capital items are paid off, such as the fire station or capital bonds that were sold for equipment or whatever, that money becomes available below the line for future capital expenditures. So this budget does include some ability to handle capital expenditures moving forward, and that money above that blue line is really available for future and advance, additional resources. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear, hopefully that made sense. So that's, that's kind of what the finances look like. So what does that equate to as far as being able to add personnel for this new fire district? We'll go to the next slide. And you'll see that in the evaluation that we did several months back, we evaluated it at 1.5 and 1.8, and that gave you subsequently 10 equivalent, full-time equivalent positions or 28 full-time equivalent positions over a five-year period at 1.8. Under the new model, at 1.5 and 2, you get the same 10 at 1.5, but you get 29 full-time equivalents at the higher 2.0 rate. If we go to the next slide, you'll see here just a scenario, this is not a recommendation, this is just an example of how that could look moving forward. So if you look at the 1.5 mil rate, you can see that essentially you can add two equivalent bodies a year. It's not going to get you much change in your capabilities, but you can add up to 10 over a five-year period. However, if you went to the 2 mil rate, you could add eight bodies, and then another eight in 2023, another eight in 2024, another three in 2025, and another two in 2026, for a total of 29 new equivalent positions. I would also say that it is not just assumed that you would only add full-time career positions, but that in some of the outlying stations where the districts now are volunteer, you could put some of this money towards creative and innovative volunteer solutions, whether that be a shift stipend, part-paid, paid per call, student programs, different ways to get staffing in the seats that may get you more bodies per FTE equivalent. So those are just some of the things that you can balance off of, that this new district board could take under consideration, but you can get the equivalent of 29 full-time equivalent positions at that 2.0 mil rate. So that is, that is kind of the 30,000-foot flyover on the financial, financial modeling. That 1.5 is probably just barely sustainable, 2.0 gives you a good amount of room to build the resources you would most likely need, and I'll explain to you operationally why those bodies would be important and what that would benefit the district if it were to come into existence.
Sheldon?
But I'll stop here for a minute. Yes, sir?
Yeah, now, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheldon, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate the information. The last time you came before us, you laid out a few different kinds of scenarios based on the number of, of current entities that joined into the fire district. And my recollection was that the model for districting that gave us the highest amount of staffing relative to the call service area and relative to the number of houses was McMinnville, McMinnville Rural, and Amity. And I guess my question is, was there consideration of going forward with the district with just those three, knowing that that, unless that, unless that underlying information has changed, knowing that that was a better economic long-term model for the taxpayers in those jurisdictions?
So, it's a great question, and so the, the ask out of that last presentation was, who would want to be considered in this final model? And these are the seven jurisdictions to step forward. I can tell you, and I will tell you at the end, that a couple have already backed out, and so you aren't going to have this model as an option. The, the model, the scenario that had Amity, McMinnville Rural, and McMinnville is certainly still an option, but there are a couple other jurisdictions that would like to be a part of it, and I would say that given what we're seeing in this modeling, I think it would be just as advantageous with a couple more jurisdictions as it was with the previous modeling. But I'll go over some of the operational impacts and some of the recommendations as to where we think these bodies could best benefit this new district, and then Thursday night will be a whole nother discussion to determine who, who's actually going to move forward with the intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, the one, the one district that didn't seem to necessarily pencil out, but that I think that the City of McMinnville has a strong interest in is Carlton, and that's primarily because our watershed is, is in rural Carlton.
Sure.
But, but, you know, those are the ones that I see a clear relationship with. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I'll certainly take any more questions on the financial overview, but if, if, when you're done, then I'll do the operational overview, then we can talk at the end about what this might look like and what some of these recommendations might be for where to put resources.
I don't see any additional hands, Sheldon.
Okay.
So if you want to go into the operational piece, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Next slide, please. So, some general findings, and these are consistent with the last model, but I will reiterate them. Every agency has made their level-headed best effort to meet the service delivery needs of the communities that they serve, and they've tried to get creative and innovative, and they've done what they can with what they have available. So there is a lot of good things going on, and there are some very distinctive risk and response attributes that are different. This is a very complex risk profile, meaning you have urban elements, suburban elements, rural elements, and wilderness elements. And while that provides some challenges, it also provides some opportunities because you have a variation of capabilities within these jurisdictions that want to participate or potentially participate, that will allow you to cover a wide swath of all risk response. Meaning, you have jurisdictions that are very good at urban interface and wildland firefighting, you have agencies that are very good with high-angle rescue and swift water rescue, you have agencies that are very strong in their structural firefighting, and you have agencies that are very strong in their EMS services. You bring them all together and you leverage those strengths and you get some synergy, and you could have a very significant benefit and potential for standardization and enhanced coordination and increased capabilities. And so I think that whatever ends up coming out, the other end of this effort as a district, there are going to be some substantial benefits, both operationally, administratively, and I believe financially versus all trying to do this on your own at that level of service. So, that's the first general observations. Next slide, please. The second thing that I just want to review with you, and this is from last time, but I'll just go very quickly, is why do we care? Why do we, why do we need to have an immediate response within seven to 10 minutes for that first unit? And why do we need to have what we call an effective response force of 17 to 20 for your standard, most likely, single-family dwelling, 2,000-square-foot structure fire? Well, and the answer is right up here on the board. So the first thing is you need to understand is that time and temperature curve, that housing and residential units that have plastic furniture, synthetic furniture, polymers, wood, truss construction, different elements of wood, truss construction, different elements of modern-day construction and living, they tend to burn pretty quickly. And from the time that garbage can in the corner of the room becomes a fully involved room and superheats the rest of the structure, that can happen in as quick as seven to 10 minutes. For some of the construction techniques and how we put these trusses and these homes together, you can start seeing structural weakening, which can be an impact on firefighter safety within 20 minutes. So this is why it's important to get that first unit there within seven to 10 to knock it down, and that supporting cast of 17 to 20 to have that choreographed, critical task performed at the same time. Not only do you want somebody pulling a line in the door to put the fire out, you want to have a search team available to pull out anybody who needs rescuing. You want to make sure that you have a crew ready who can do vertical or other types of ventilation to release the heated gas so that the internal crew can make access and egress properly and quickly. You want to make sure you have a rapid intervention crew, heaven forbid, everything, anything ever happens where you need to have a firefighter extricated. So you need to have a water supply so you don't run out of water. So all these things need to happen in a choreographed timeframe within that, that 14 to 20-minute timeframe that need to be conducted well. That's why you need to get that first unit there in seven, and that 17 to 20 there in that 15-minute timeframe. On the cardiac arrest of the medical perspective, if the heart stops or if breathing stops, you have an exponential decrease in outcomes by the minute. So for instance, in a cardiac arrest, if, if someone witnesses that, 90 to 95% of the time, that heart can be shocked through defibrillation into another, to, to a rhythm that could potentially be sustainable. That drops off precipitously by every minute. By the time you get down to eight, nine, 10 minutes, without that unit being there with the defibrillator, there's zero chance of survivability. That's why we want to get there so quickly on the medicals. So we have a common goal to get there within seven to 10 minutes for a fire or a medical, and then on a fire, we have a very need, a significant need to get that 17 to 20 people there within that 20-minute time, 15 to 20-minute timeframe. So it's just important to remember, why are we even doing this? Why, why are we looking at this and running all these statistics and all this modeling? This is why. Next slide, please. So if this new district were to be formed with these jurisdictions that we're talking about, just to give you a sample of what you would be doing, about 80% of what you would be running is medical calls. You'd have a call volume of just a little over 8,000 calls a year. You'd run structure fires at a rate of about 4.3%. Given your complex risk profile, I would say that that, you do not have a fire problem, but that is a significant number that definitely says you need to have adequate suppression capabilities within your communities to make that initial knockdown that we talked about to keep the small fires from being big fires. The rest of your calls are a spattering of other types of emergencies that we would expect to see. You have a slightly higher than normal motor vehicle collision rate, but that would be expected also. When you look at the amount of cover acreage and miles that you cover and all the rural and, and two-lane roads that you have, so unsupparated roads, so that, that would be expected. But those are some of the unique things about your risk profile that this new fire district would have to take care of and mitigate and respond to. Next slide, please. The other thing that you would notice is that this new fire district would have a very pronounced call volume that increases from eight in the morning till eight at night. So when you start talking about your unit hour utilization and your reliability, you can see that you're going to be stretched thinner eight in the morning to eight at night. That's important to know should you ever have to take and, and have some peak demand help. But it's also important to notice that from 2,300 hours or 10 or 11 o'clock at night till eight in the morning, when things start picking up, the call volume decreases, but the types of calls change. You tend to get the low-frequency, high-risk calls, such as structure fires in the middle of the night. Why is that? They go undetected longer, people are asleep in a, asleep in a compromised state, and they don't get detected as soon as all those people running around during the day and see a puff of smoke. So they tend to be bigger, more severe, with a more rescue capable, potential. You also find that medicals that occur after 2,300 hours or 11 o'clock at night tend to be more severe because people tend to not want to call, they tend to sit on it and wait, and it tends to get significantly worse before they actually do take the initiative and call 911. So you still have to have your resources in place after hours, but you need to understand your resources are going to be stretched and out of position more from eight in the morning till eight at night. Next slide, please. This is a picture I just want to show you briefly, and it's very complicated to see, but I do want you to just notice something. These are storm scopes of the types of where your calls are clustering and occurring. You have your fire calls, your EMS calls, and all calls. And all I want to draw your attention to is that everywhere where you see a shading in a storm scope, that's where you're at. That's good news. If we saw a big clustering of calls with a storm scope image where you're not, then I would say that we need to start looking at recommending changing location of firehouses or adding fire stations. You don't need to do that. We're not recommending any additional fire stations immediately for you. What we are recommending is that you increase the resources within the fire stations that you have, but this tells you they seem to be located in the right spot. There where the calls are occurring. So that's good news. Next slide. But what you will see, we plotted every call that has occurred in this proposed district over a two- or three-year period, and you will see that there's a red dots that are over 12-minute responses. And your initial reaction is, wow, those are right near the fire station. Why are they so long? Well, they're so long because your reliability is not good because you're stretched, because the calls are occurring simultaneously. So this tells us we need to look at more units within those areas to be able to accommodate these calls, so they're not going over 12 minutes. It's only 2% of the time, but you can see where they're clustered. You guys just authorized, I believe, some new positions for an additional ambulance for the ambulance service area. This is exactly why, because your units were beginning to get stressed, and they were beginning to get stretched because of the amount of calls that were occurring simultaneously. Next slide, please. What you'll see here is how quickly can we get these effective response force in place? And I did an eight-minute map and a 14-minute map only for the purposes of contrast. And what I want to basically explain to you is when you have what's called a combination system, which means you have career personnel that staff 24/7, and then you have volunteer personnel that respond in from, from home and respond in from their place of work, it is normal to do a 14-minute response time map because that's what you needed to, to look at, at your ability to get that 17 to 18, or 17 to 20 people. What you'll see is in eight minutes, you're only really getting anywhere from two to six personnel. And from the eight-minute time to the 20-minute time to the rest of your people show up, those are long minutes for your firefighting crews who are actively engaged with firefighting. You'll see at that 14-minute mark, you're getting somewhere between nine and 11. We really want to see that number get from 17 to 20 to have an effective, safe, effective response force for those fires. So what that tells you is under your current conditions, you're a little light in being able to get. So not only is your system stressed for the first due unit, it also doesn't have the depth to get you the 17 to 20 people in the 14 minutes we'd like to see, as I stated, back to that time and temperature curve. Next slide, please. This is what your units are doing in this proposed district. You're getting your first unit there 90% of the time in nine minutes, and then your next unit's usually about two minutes behind that, and your next unit's about two minutes behind that, and your next unit's about two minutes behind that, and then by the time you get all your units there, meaning your 17 to 20 personnel, it's about 21, almost 22 minutes. That is a long time, and those units come in staggered, but your effective response force and your critical tasks are not happening concurrently. They're having to happen in, in, you know, one at a time, and therefore there can be some lag and some gap in your procedures and the safety of your firefighters and citizens. So it's important to know that we want to get them there a little quicker than 21 minutes, and you'll see that by the staffing patterns that we're recommending, you should be able to accomplish that. Next slide, please. This is a very complicated slide. I'm only going to cover three very brief things. The first set of numbers there is the amount of time it takes to dispatch a call. The only thing I would tell you is the national standard is one minute is taking you closer to three minutes. I've talked with your chief and with staff and with dispatch, and there are a number of things you're doing that you can probably take a look at, that some of these things can be shortened based on standardization, based on technology, based on how you're dispatching calls. One of the recommendations is you work with the dispatch center to do that. That's something you can control to shorten that time. The second set of numbers you see is the amount of time it takes you to go in service from the time you get the call. That too is running about two minutes, where we'd like to see it at the one minute or one twenty, one minute and 20 second mark for fires, because you got to put on your personal protective equipment. That's an opportunity to look for systems to be able to shorten that timeframe. That does not mean they're sitting around finishing their dinner. What that probably means is we need to take a look at the technology, when the buttons are being pressed, when that time is being captured, or more likely, because your system is stressed, are they at a hospital and having to get the patient off the gurney? Are they having to try to get resupplied and get their unit back in service before they can go in service? Those are the type of things you can look at, that some of this additional staffing and some systems and policies can be put in place to help shorten. And then the last one is your drive time, and that is six minutes of 43 seconds, 90% of the time. The, the ideal drive time is four minutes. You, you will probably never get there, given the geography you have to cover, nor is it realistic for you to get there. But there are some things you can look at with putting rigs at places that will allow them to get in service quicker, or units that can get in service quicker, having preemption devices on all of the main thoroughfares, all those, there's different types of things you can look at to make sure those things are, are taken care of, and you can reduce that slightly. But the first two, you have a lot more control over. So I wanted you to at least see that, to see how your performance is in relation to national standards. Next slide, please. Once again, a busy slide. I'm only going to show you a small portion of it. That is your medic units, medic one, medic 10, medic 12. They're approaching what we call a stressed status that needs evaluation. You have already addressed this and approved an additional ambulance, so kudos to you. You've addressed that problem. But the good news is the rest of the units, as far as your engines and your truck companies, are not stressed, so they have the ability, they just need to have the staffing so they can get out the door quicker, and they can get to these calls quicker with the right amount of people on them. So that's what that, that reliability slide shows you, but you have went a long way to address that with adding that additional ambulance. So congratulations, well done. Next slide. So here are our overall final recommendations that I think will lead us to some good discussions. One of the things is it's not realistic to design a system around one set of response standards for urban, suburban, rural, and wilderness areas. It is not realistic to move 15 miles out of town and expect to get the same response as you're going to get on Second Street or Third Street. So we need to make sure that you have reasonable standards that are data-driven, that align with the risk profile within those areas. By doing that, you can measure this several different ways versus one way, like we did on this report, because you don't have those areas broken out, that will allow you to measure the system well and for the new district board members and policymakers to be able to move resources accordingly to meet the goals that are appropriate for those zones. Secondly, you definitely need to increase your 24/7 station coverage with paid staff or in some cases with volunteer incentive programs that I believe I mentioned earlier, such as stipend, part-paid, student programs. There's a number of different ways you can apply some revenue to get more bodies for the buck using volunteer-type programs. Work with your dispatch center to decrease those dispatch times and evaluate those turnout times and the impedance factors to try to figure out what can we do to get on, in service quicker, and a lot of that is going to be related to additional resources. So those are the general ones. And then the, the specific recommendations, next slide, please, that we're going to recommend is that if this district were to form with all these jurisdictions, which I can tell you one is already off the table, so stand by, we would want you to put an additional three-person truck company out of the station here in downtown. That not only would serve the McMinnville proper, but the whole district as a whole, it can move in any direction that's really right in the middle. It's the hub of the wheel and allow that effective response force to be better. Staff an engine at Lafayette that will, that will support the areas that are seeing high call volume and definitely have value coming into the city proper. Staff an engine at Amity, which also can come into the city and also can go out to the more rural areas, and staff an engine at Dundee with three personnel, although I met with them today and they are going in a different direction. We can talk about that in a minute. Next slide, please. So then what I did is we went ahead and we ran that new effective response force to say, okay, how many bodies can we get there now with 14, in 14 minutes with this staffing model? And it's, it's hard to see the colors, but here's what I would show you, is that basically all of the areas that have the majority of the calls, including the McMinnville proper, Dundee proper, and, and the rural areas that are, that are coming in, and the district areas that are converging in, in the populated areas, you are getting now between 20 and 22 personnel within 14 minutes. Now you're in business. Now you can do that effective response force, you can do those critical tasking in a timely manner and get everything going within that 20-minute window, which will greatly decrease the amount of fire loss, increase the amount of firefighter safety, increase the capabilities for active fire rescues, and hopefully decrease the amount of fire loss as you get on these fires quicker with more people. So, so that's what that, that model shows there if you were to staff up as we had recommended. Next slide, please. The other thing that we have delivered is we've delivered a full implementation plan that talks about the different committees that need to be established as part of this ballot and implementation measure. And you now have a full implementation plan that has all 250-something things that need to be done with a specific numbers of hours it takes to accomplish those, so you can put a cost to that based on staff you have to assign to do that, and the timing to do that, and the order and incremental ways in which those things should be done between now and when the district becomes a reality. Next slide, please. So the one thing that is left before you really are down the road on this thing is to review the final presentation tomorrow night with representations from each of the jurisdictions that are still interested in moving forward. Having those who are truly committed to this leave with an IGA that will be an intergovernmental agreement that has been drafted, that will address how you will pay your fair share and participate in the election process, in the legal formation of the district process, in the cost for doing any sort of political action and consultant work that will need to be done for getting this across the line successfully. We will know tomorrow night who's going to leave and take that to their jurisdictions for approval. They'll still have to be approved by their individual boards, but once those are signed, then you'll have your group moving forward. We'll also talk about the next steps in a ballot measure and district formation and talk about things such as what are some of the assumptions moving into this? Who's most likely going to be in and out? How are you going to determine your, your governance structure? Do you have some flexibility in statute, whether you want an out-large election district or whether you want a district by proportion? All those things need to be discussed and kind of moved forward. We'll have legal counsel there to, to give you the expertise on those areas, which I don't have. Establish a ballot measure working group so you know moving forward who's going to be in the room and who needs to be at the table. It's going to be essential that you have your volunteer groups, your labor group, and your, and your board members at this ballot measure working group. You are the ones who ultimately are going to have to carry the water on this. The paid staff can do nothing more than provide factual information. It's going to be up to those groups to ultimately sell this to the communities that are going to be voting. And then use all the plethora of data and reports that we've submitted to you so that you can move this forward and refine and overcome any challenges, which there will be. But in closing, I guess what I would say is this is feasible, this is beneficial, this will provide a higher level of service than you are capable of doing on your own each collectively, and I do believe that this is going to result in a series of smaller districts that ultimately will work together as a fire authority. We have already been approached by Dundee and Dundee Rural, that they are moving forward with developing their own district between those two entities, and I believe they've taken some action and have some pending action by the city on that. So they would like to get that inked up and then have you guys decide what you're going to do and get that inked up and then talk about an intergovernmental agreement on working together and seeing if there is some opportunity in the, in the future about doing something together as a district, but ultimately working together as an authority. We've also been approached by Sheridan, who's working with the districts down, the Western, I always get it messed up. West Valley. On what they might do together, and should they come together, they also would like to look at perhaps doing some sort of an IGA or fire authority approach with this district that forms in, in the north here, should that happen. And so that is really where this is coming down to, and as of now, you have depending, assuming you're going to want to be a part of this meeting tomorrow, you have McMinnville Rural, Amity, Carlton, and Lafayette, who have all committed to show up with two representatives and to see if they can get to a place where they can get comfortable moving that IGA forward back to their boards to be a part of this process. So to answer your counsel, the question that I got earlier on the optimum, Amity, New Carlton, and, and McMinnville, you also have Lafayette at the table, which does have some synergistic benefit. That would not be a bad group to optimize if you all decide to move forward together. So with that, I'm going to stop talking. As you know, I talk fast and I do a lot of it. So I'm going to be quiet and take questions and see if I can help with anything you need clarification on moving forward, and you can go to the last slide.
Could we take the slide down so we can see? And we have Kelly with her hand up. Kelly?
I just wanted to confirm that everybody understands it's going to then be a two-mill type of consolidation? I mean, that's a big deal for some of these smaller towns.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we've had some great conversations over the last two days about what they pay now versus what they're going to pay. I've reviewed the mill rates of all the jurisdictions to them, where they're at currently. I've reviewed the mill rates of all the jurisdictions to them, where they're at currently. The average, if you average them all together, is a one-point-three. I did, I make it clear that pretty much to have a sustainable district in this day and age, in the, in the Oregon universe, two-point-oh, or very close to two-point-oh is the number you need to be at, and I think everybody is aware of that, but that is something that would have to be quantified tomorrow night, moving forward. But I believe that is, everybody understands the need to get there, or be very close for this to be sustainable.
And they're all, the councils are on board with this, or?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say.
Tomorrow night.
I wouldn't say they're on board. I would say that they are cautiously willing to attend this meeting tomorrow night. They have some questions they want answered about the impacts of McMinnville, the capital needs coming in from the different jurisdictions, the labor influence from the jurisdictions. So there's lots of questions, and do I think that they will all leave and approve the IGA? I think they'll all leave with the IGA. I do not know if they'll all be approved, but I think we have some discussions with legal counsel tomorrow night, and I'll have continued discussions to address their concerns. But I think we've had some good discussions, and, and I think there's a better understanding of how this works, that equity should not be viewed in terms of, we have the same, we have the same mill rate in this rural area as we do in the city, but then you also need to understand that you're bringing in six-hundred-thousand dollars to this new district, and the city's bringing in eight-point-five million dollars. So it's all proportional, and then the, the district now has complete authority to utilize that, to benefit the district as a whole, based on the risk profile and the need. And this is no longer the individual boards or the individual councils running this fire department. They're out of the business. This is now the district with their appointed board, running fire and emergency services for this area.
And this meeting tomorrow evening, I don't believe any of us have necessarily received an invitation, perhaps some have. Can anyone attend this? How would we know how to attend it?
So I believe the ask was, that we have two representatives actively in the meeting for the work session. Obviously, you've got to stay away from quorums. Anyone else can zoom in and observe, but this will be a work session. And, and all we are going to hope to get out of this is what I, what I had went over on that previous slide, that they're willing to take back the IGA with the understanding of what the parameters of this proposed district would look like, so that you can then move forward.
And so all this.
And thank you. Thank you for all your work on this, Sheldon, bye.
Oh, you're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Thank you, Kelly. Jeff, so who do we have earmarked to represent McMinnville tomorrow evening?
So let me double-check with the chief, but I believe that Counselor Garvin, and I think that you, Mayor, were invited. Or am I mistaken about that second invite? I know Counselor Garvin is ready to go.
Right, because I leave in the morning, so I'm going to.
Well, that's right, you've got the travel.
Yeah. So if we, Chief, if we need to make other asks, we might do that tonight, those that might have an interest, so that we'd have two representatives there. Other questions? Again, Sheldon, you know, from a financial standpoint and an operational standpoint, you guys have been so thorough, and I know we've got so much data, but tonight you've been able to really narrow that down and give us a good picture of, of capacity, where we need to be, and why this is so critical for our future positioning to be effective. Let's go to President, Council President Grabkin, Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. What time is the meeting tomorrow?
It is 5:00 PM, and it's scheduled for three hours, so we're going to, we're going to do a marathon session until everybody leaves with their questions answered.
Wonderful, thank you, and thank you, Counselor Garvin, for attending.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you please send out an invitation, or not an invitation, but let us know how we could turn into it? Obviously, we won't all be discussing it, we'll just be sitting and listening, but it'd be nice to have that information.
You might be. I just have to drop the invite that, um, will be tomorrow night, so if you guys are listening in via Z, feel free to text if any questions you have from a city perspective and I'm happy to, with those concerns, to get those questions answered tomorrow night, even later at all, as a group president.
Adam, you're breaking up significantly.
Can you hear me any better now?
Yeah, that's a bit better, yes.
I was just saying that if anybody wants to listen in tomorrow night, they're welcome to reach out to me via text tomorrow if a question arises that you'd like to get answered, or perspective you'd like to share. I'm happy to ask those questions, pending that's legally okay with Amanda.
How'd you know, Counselor Garvin, that I was going to chime in? My recommendation would.
Oh, just that little smirk on your face.
I'm assuming that Rich will be there, so my recommendation would be that if you have questions, to give them to staff, rather than talk amongst the council, particularly if a quorum are even watching.
Great direction, Amanda. Other questions from council? Adam? Well, let's go, no, Zach, and then Adam.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Sheldon, and then, and then actually a question for Counselor Garvin, and I'll ask Garvin the question here, not via text. Sheldon, the, how are we on timeline from the conversations I've heard at this level around the concept of districting? Aside from the seemingly high confidence level that it's going to happen, I, I gather that it's imminent, as in like, the spring election, or the special election. How are we on that timeline? Is, is the process that you're outlining keeping us on that track? Are we, are we, is that no way? Is it, is that far off? Who's, who's pushing that effort forward at our level, and at the group's level, or is it just too many moving pieces still yet to tell?
The chief's going to take that one.
Counselor, the, in the discussion we've had with our contract attorney from LGLI, he has indicated that he did not feel that a May election would be in the best interest of success of the opportunity, that he truly believes that a November election is going to be in the best interest of the success. And obviously, it has a lot to do with the numbers of entities joining, and the dynamics of bringing them together, but he, he felt that, that that was going to be the better opportunity for success, given the amount of workload that we had to, to push this forward, and the public outreach that had to be done that hasn't been done yet.
And just to give you a, a sampling of what that would look like, if you're looking at a twenty-twenty-two November election, assuming it passes, which I'm sure it will, you're looking at probably a go-live of July twenty-twenty-three. By the time you've got money coming in, and this thing's going to be functioning as a district.
What you're telling me there is, if it was to hit the ballot November twenty-twenty-two and pass, July twenty-twenty-three, the district would be real.
Yes.
And functioning.
Yes, and, and between January one, which I believe the district, and I'm getting out of my lane, so council jump, jump in if I'm out, but, but I believe it becomes real from a standpoint, January one, but it's going to, by the time you get tax rolls in, and you have money to spend, and you're going to take that six months to do some interim implementation work, because obviously, it's going to take some time and effort to get some people on board, and figure out who's the employer, and how that works, and all that. So, so yeah, from Jan, January to July, you're going to be doing some heavy transitional work, maybe even with a temporary appointed board, until, and then in July, you'll, you'll, you know, you'll probably at that point have an election for your board.
Copy that. Thank you. Well, maybe I should pause for my lawyer to speak before I ask Counselor Garvin. Okay. Next question would be for Counselor Garvin. I know you've done a huge amount of work, being in a lot of these community conversations. Just wonder if I could just get your pulse direct on the other communities out there, and their, their reactions, and, and, and joining, joining along. I know you've just been way more in-depth in those conversations, and I would love to hear your perspective shared.
Leading into last night's meeting, it didn't seem like Amity had much interest at all at being at the table. Last night, after about a three-hour meeting, they seemed to at least want to show up Thursday and, and see what it's about. I still don't have a ton of confidence that they're going to be there when we go to vote November, but at least they're going to be there Thursday. Carlton, I, I think has, you know, probably some, some split among their, their board and demographic, and how that organization just functions as a whole. And Lafayette, I think, is probably our most probable partner outside of MacRule at this point in time, just from my, my ear-to-the-ground feel, but tomorrow night, we'll definitely shake that out a little bit more. Question for Sheldon, if, if that answers Counselor Geary's question.
Yeah, I'm done. Thanks.
Your, your slides, I, I know the data's kind of been, we've dissected this nine ways to Sunday, so I, I realize the dating's kind of on the slides there a little bit, but it did show that we were, a district would be bringing people on in twenty-two, and just to clarify, you know, if it went to about November twenty-two, and went live in July twenty-three, the chance of actually having new staff servicing this new prospective new district probably isn't going to happen until like, January of twenty-four, is that correct?
Well, it depends. It depends on the formation of the new board, and what policies, and how quickly you want to hit them, cash flow, and what you're going to do about cash flow, and there's options about that when you form the district, whether that be in advance, whether that be a loan, whether that be, there's, there's different ways to do it, because you've got to wait for your tax rolls to catch up with your expenses. But I think that there's probably room for taking a look at how quickly you could do some things, but I think for a, for a full-blown, significant personnel, yeah, I think you're looking at twenty-twenty-four for, for most of that. And I, and as far as the, the modeling goes, you are correct. We would need to bump it out a, a couple of years, and I think, now, we don't, can't see what's happening with, with housing and AV, but if we don't have a crash, the revenue picture's probably going to outperform even the model we have there.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Next question would be, you know, with the discussions you've had, kind of on Counselor Geary's question, and we, knowing that it's an all-or-nothing vote, regardless who comes to the table, all districts have to pass to form the new district. What, what is your feel on, you know, what is a successful number? Is it two districts, four districts, three districts? It definitely seems like the ask of all these partners currently coming to the meeting tomorrow night is probably a stretch.
Yeah. So I think, and I, and I wish I had a crystal ball, I mean, I think your assessment of, of where people are was right on. That's consistent with what I've heard the last two days. But I would say this, I would think that whatever the partners are moving forward, and I think there needs to be an understanding coming out of Thursday night, that you're going to do some early polling, and there needs to be some heartfelt conversations with some of the groups, volunteer groups and others, and if you get early indications through polling or through feedback, that there's not going to be support, or there's going to be a, a resistance to this, I think you need to be prepared to adjust the participants moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Given that, and with their likelihood of being a, you know, two-to-four-member district initially, what does that do as far as the staffing level numbers? I know, you know, McMinnville and McMinnville Rural, if they went to two bucks, that would generate a significant amount of new revenue for staffing, but, and Amity's basically right at two bucks right now anyways.
Yeah.
But if, say it was Mac, MacRule and Lafayette, does that move our staffing numbers around a ton from, from your analyzation of the numbers, or are we still there on increasing the service level substantially, and putting up engine in Lafayette, and a truck company in McMinnville, or?
Yeah. Yeah, to answer your question, obviously, it's going to have to scale, and, and for all the scenarios we did, we probably didn't do the right one, at the end of the day, because we, we, we don't know who's going to go on the ballot, and we certainly can, can do that. But, but I, I would say this intuitively, looking at these numbers till my eyes cross, I believe if it was, I believe staffing for the truck here in Lafayette Engine will stand under any of those scenarios you just mentioned. I believe, I believe you can get there.
Okay, thank you, and I was going to ask this tomorrow night, but after tomorrow night, are you, you still on board, like, moving forward and kind of figuring out that, or are we working off the numbers you've presented, and, and you're down the road, and we're just working with our district attorney moving forward?
So, I mean, I'm, I'm obviously all-in on this project, and would love to see it conclude successfully, whatever that looks like. As far as our analysis goes, I think we're, we're done. If there's, and then the, obviously, the political consulting is not what I do, or we do, and then your legal counsel's going to play a huge role in, in drafting and forming the district. That all being said, I told the chief that if there are some services that's needed, if there's some facilitation, if there's some additional analysis that needs to be done, we, we will do it, and we'd be happy to do it. And if I need to come back and, and help with some facilitation, or some community meetings, or, or putting together some stuff for the community, we would, we would be happy to assist with that. We're not under contract to do that currently, but we could certainly make that happen, and, and would do it at as close to cost as possible.
Okay, thank you, and appreciate all your work up to this point. It's been great to get all the information from you, so appreciate you being on the project.
All good.
My other question would be just, council as a whole, is, do you guys have a, a direction as far as how big of a lift you want this to be as elected officials tomorrow night, or are you wanting it to, to stay smaller? Do you have any direction at all, or do you want to get as many people out of tomorrow night as possible?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Adam, I don't have to attend it. I, I just, the way it was discussed in the presentation, it sounded like, oh gee, y'all come. I am interested, for sure, but I don't know that it needs to be a whole group thing.
Oh, no, I wasn't being as far as attending, or being as far as how big of a lift with district partners you get, do we as a body want to be, or would we look, you know, have a more, go these tight groups, you know, with one or two partners, or you get this bridge model, completely present, and do you have any direction there, or just to see how it works out tomorrow night?
My, my feeling is, if we're there, I mean, no one should be talking but you, and, Rich, and whoever else might be chosen to go with you.
But I think he's asking how much of a lift that we want to do, more than less to be a part of the initial district. I mean, because we can go into this very positively in saying that we want Mac, MacRule, Lafayette, and Carlton, and, and Amity, or we take the, the feel of the meeting, like right now, it sounds like Amity may not really want to be there, but for the chief, I would ask the next question. We're providing fire service and, and to them right now, and so how does that look for them? I have a real question from that perspective. But I think that's what Adam was asking, is, you know, how charged?
Yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Adam.
That's exactly what my question was, Mayor, you hit the nail on the head.
So was that question aimed at me, Mr. Mayor, as to what the effort and energy? If, if, if Amity chose not to move along with the district, because?
Yeah, I'd like to know what, because they're contracting with this right now, what does that look like?
So if they chose not to move along with the district, they could entertain and stay in the contract as we sit concurrently, and then once the new district were formed, they could enter into a contract with them for the same types of services that are currently going on, or they could choose to go another direction, that would be up to them.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have to necessarily cancel the contract because of that, of them choosing not to move along.
Okay. 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 Let's, Amanda, you've had your hand up for a while. So go ahead, and then we'll go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to touch base about the meeting tomorrow. So typically, well, what we do whenever there is a possibility of a quorum of council to be present at a meeting is we will put out a notice saying that there's a possibility of a quorum, but that no decisions are going to be made. So I would ask that if, I'd like to get an idea from the counselors if they think they'd be attending via Zoom. But I will also note that this will be broadcast. And there's a link on our website. If you go to the page where it shows our meetings, there is a link, this is posted, and there is a link to that. So if you want to attend, I would suggest, rather than us going through the process of doing the notice of quorum, just watch it on the broadcast rather than doing the Zoom. But if, if, if a majority's going to do it via Zoom, we'll probably do the notice. So I just, after the discussion, I'd like to get an idea if the counselors are going to attend via Zoom, for us to do that.
Okay. We'll come back to that at the end. Zach has a question.
Thanks. This would be just in response to Garvin's straw poll. But my preference is, just seems like we've put a lot of hope and effort into the, the success of the district. And so it, my, my preference would be that, that fine balance between big enough to be efficient and, and organizationally strong and a good start, but the, with the greatest chance to pass on the first run, right? As you pointed out, one, one jurisdiction says, votes no, we all go down. And so if, if it means starting and proof of concept, and, and one community adds every year or two, to get there in 10 years at all of us, great, booyah. But I think the important distinction, or the important tipping point would be the one, the, the configuration that gives us the biggest amount of viability to pass that first go-round.
Well put, Zach. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not available tomorrow night, Amanda, so that's the answer to that. Adam, in response to your question, I've been one of those who's been more critical of the, of the bigger district. I was actually a little more concerned about Dundee, just with the financials and the size of the district. All of the jurisdictions that were mentioned, I mean, they, it seems like we already have a relationship with them, or, or a good reason to at least contemplate going into districting with them. So I, I guess my position would be, you know, I think you should be encouraging and, and supportive of, of more groups coming in, mindful of, of Zach's comment that, you know, if, if there's a lot of pushback and reticence on the part of elected officials that we might be needing to, to go to bat for this with their, their communities, then, you know, take that into account. But I really appreciate your willingness to take the lead on it. So, thank you.
So first to Amanda's question, I am also not available tomorrow night. So if that helps resolve this issue. And I want to say a big thank you to Adam for taking the lead in doing this. I know you put a ton of effort into this. And thank you to Sheldon and, and Chief for their work. And I guess I'm just going to echo both Zach's observations of the best path forward and, and Sal's. I think, you know, we want, Dundee was a question mark for me as well. I do know, I've heard a lot of voices out of Amity. I've got some folks that I know that are part of, are part of the volunteer force that's out there. So I do know the reticence that's out in Amity. So I would echo the, the statement by Zach, that we need to make sure that whoever we're bringing on, we've got support and have a chance of passage. We don't want to be taken down by one group. So that would be my voice.
Thank you, Chris. Kelly?
I'm content to watch this online, whatever happens tomorrow night. I'm not online, but the recording. I don't need to be there. I just wanted to know what was being said and stuff. So I actually knew about how this was working out, although I suspect the guys are probably right on. I do want to thank Adam. I think he's done a really good job. And, yeah, I, I would hate to see it go down by one. I think we need to really look at it very closely.
Thank you, Kelly. I, I'm going to ask at this time, because I, I'm leaving on vacation tomorrow morning, and Council President Grabkin is not available tomorrow evening. Kelly, would you be willing to represent the council with Adam? You've had a long-term look at this process. And so our representatives, I would submit Adam to been a part of this. But Kelly, would you be willing to represent the council tomorrow evening?
Yeah, I guess I would. I probably won't say much. I, I'm sure, I guess, if I have a question, I will ask. But yeah, I'd be glad to.
And so I'm just going to, Chief, I think those are the two that we'll have representing the city would be Adam and Kelly then, representing. And so if we can get the information to Kelly, so she can be a part of whether we're meeting in a face-to-face mode or a Zoom mode, just let her know.
We are, we are trying to have a face-to-face meeting, if at all possible. Unless there's a reason you can't, we will have Zoom access for those that cannot be here face-to-face. We will have, it'll be in the council chambers, and it will have a light dinner. So Amy, Chief Hanifin, will get in touch with you. I'll send the documents out that go along with it that we have from ESCI, just so you have some additional information in the event you have, you know, 20 or 30 hours between now and then to read through all the work that Sheldon's done.
Well, light, light dinner. I think I checked my schedule out. It looks like I am free. All right.
Okay. So any, everybody, I think, has had an opportunity to weigh in. And tomorrow evening's going to be a critical step in this process to see the partners that feel like they have the support of the city or fire district, or their citizens. And so I think we've prepared ourselves well. Sheldon, again, thank you for the efforts that you've put in. I know this has been, given COVID, a long, expanded process, but we're here. And tomorrow night makes it very, very critical. And I think we've got two representatives plus the chief representing McMinnville.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's been an honor and privilege to work with you. And great organization, great city. And I look forward to seeing where it goes.
Thank you. Well, with that, I am going to adjourn our work session evening, and then we're going to then move over to an executive session, and we have a, a different Zoom call-in for that. So thank everyone, and we'll talk to you later.